Ready?
More transparent, what do you want?
Okay.
The packet's out there, people are going to say it. They can look it up.
You good? All right, uh, welcome, it's a city council regular meeting, it's December seventeenth. Next week is, uh, Christmas, remember me and your gifts? As long as they're little and sweet. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, geez. Uh, glad that you're all here, um, it's fun to have a council meeting in December. You know, Christmas trees in the, in the council chambers and we're all thinking of good things, so. Thanks for being here, uh, as for the roll call tonight, we're missing one councilman. Councilman Brian Del Rosario had a, another engagement tonight that he had to go to and we're going to excuse him for that. Uh, I'd like to move on to the pledge of allegiance and would like to ask if anyone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Anyone?
A young man would.
You would like to, young man? Great. Would everyone please rise? He can do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are the youngest guy that's ever done that. Could you, do you have a little bag or something you could carry something in?
I don't have anything.
Anything at all?
You got hands.
He's got pockets.
Come here, come here. You gotta make the most out of this.
That's even better.
To Brian's spot.
Future leaders of America.
Yeah, get a whole.
Do you know who they are?
I don't know. There you go. New committee one, new committee member, and then TPW is back there. There you go. We have TPW and our chief committee. Oh, they're here. Take all of them, there you go, take the whole thing.
We're honoring them or something.
There you go.
That has got to be the youngest man to ever do that. Thank you, I don't know your name, but thank you so much. That made my December, that might have made my whole year. Let's go home.
Call it a night.
I would like to ask if anybody has an inspirational thought or would offer an invocation?
I have something I'd like to share.
Thanks.
I'd like to commend the family that's doing something right at home. Good job. I received a Christmas card for some good friends called Doug and Denise Robach. And this, that I'm going to read was included in that Christmas card. The gold wrapping paper. Once upon a time, a man punished his five-year-old daughter for using up the family's only roll of expensive gold wrapping paper. Money was tight and he'd become even more upset when on Christmas Eve he saw that the child had pasted the gold paper so as to decorate a shoebox to put under the Christmas tree. Nevertheless, the next morning, the little girl filled with excitement brought the gift box to her father and said, "This is for you daddy." As he opened the box, the father was embarrassed by his earlier overreaction. But when he opened it, he found it was empty and again his anger flared. "Don't you know, young lady?" he said harshly, "When you give someone a present, there's supposed to be something inside the package." The little girl looked up to him with tears rolling down her eyes and said, "I'm a grandpa." Daddy, it's not empty, I blew kisses into it until it was all full. The father was crushed, he fell on his knees and put his arms around his precious little girl, he begged her to forgive him for his unnecessary anger. An accident took the life of the child only a short time later and it's told that the father kept a little gold box by his bed for all the years of his life. And whenever he was discouraged or faced difficulty, difficult problems, he would open the box, take out an imaginary kiss and remember the love of a beautiful child who had put it there. In a very real sense, each of us has been given an invisible gold box filled with unconditional love and kisses from our Savior Jesus Christ. During the celebration of his birth, may we all share our gold boxes with those around us. Thank you.
Thanks. Darna? Appreciate it. Um, let's move on, uh, is there a declaration of potential conflict of interest on any of the items that we're going to discuss tonight? Anyone? Okay, we'll move on, consent agenda. We'll do this rather fast unless you have some, uh, items, but, uh, for the work session of November nineteenth, are there any additions, corrections, changes?
Emily made a brief correction on who voted, um, before the meeting and that's all, I think it's been updated in the packet and everything's fine.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the regular city council meeting.
Same, same situation.
That's the only one where there was a vote taken that I remember.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any changes or corrections? Did you have something, Jason?
No, I'm just getting ready for the next item.
I'm still thinking about gold boxes and kisses and, geez. Something wrong with me tonight, I don't know. Merry Christmas, everybody, I feel like Bob Cratchit. Uh, city expenditures, from the sixteenth of November to the, the thirteenth of December, a small fortune of three million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Kind of amazing, isn't it?
I'm tense.
That's how much my wife's spent on Amazon this month.
You think your Christmas is bad. Are there any changes as you went through those expenditures? Only a million sheets. Everything looking in order?
Shannon did remind me that we do get a reimbursement for some of this, it doesn't all go out, we don't, we don't see the incoming, but it happens. Thank goodness.
Well, you, you know what, I'm, I'm just gonna say this, just so that it's on record, but, uh, we get about one point five million for all the taxes of the whole city, including the industrial and commercial pieces.
Property taxes, correct?
Property taxes. And so, all of those taxes which we changed last year, didn't even pay half of this bill. So, you know.
What I was referring to is, is Main Street and MAG, you know, reimbursing.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that go on that run this city and it's just good to look at. Anyway, um, are there any other questions, corrections, additions? Then, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So. It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Geez, I called you Brian. Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Motion passed, we're gonna go on to the public forum, bid openings, award and appointments, so. Recognition, we're gonna start with that tonight with, uh, uh, TW, TPW. And, uh, T, yeah. About called it TWP, but. And I would like to lead out, and I'm gonna read this. Is anybody else planning on it? Norm, you're aware of it?
You're it, you're it, Mayor.
Good. You know, it's been, uh, not quite three years ago, about two and a half years ago, two years ago, I got a call from a guy that I've known since I was quite young and, uh, good guy. He said, uh, "Dan, we've been looking all over, we need to find a place to put our business and would like very much to put it into Santaquin. Can you help us?" And, you know, for those of you that know me at all, I've been working with businesses, I've been working to find businesses and bring them into town to introduce them to property owners and, and, uh, we tried a couple of things, but it just wasn't working, just like he had told me. And, uh, this man was Scott Smith and Scott I had known since he was a little boy, I'm older and uglier, but, you know, all that doesn't count at times, um. And, and it occurred to me that, uh, we had industrial ground because it was zoned as such. We put together a plan and with that plan came, we can make something out of this. If we can find the businesses to fill it, we can build this industrial park without raising taxes, we can build it without having to float bonds. We just need to meet with the businesses, invite them into the city and let them know, we're going to reinvest the money that we sell your property at first and upfront to, uh, build this. And, uh, with, with TPW and Scott and Matt, uh, we, we had shot this thought towards them. Now, we'd, we had talked with the council and, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if they were reluctant at first, but, uh, I, I need to tell you that these two men were the first ones to say, uh, "Mayor will support you. You've met with the council, we've put together, uh, agreements and we sold them the property and, uh, we reinvested it, just like we said we would. We have sixty acres out there that we're working with, we have sold the properties and are in the middle of just the final pieces and, um, we have businesses going in, we have jobs coming to town, we have some of the most incredible things you'll see throughout this year that will add to the first one that came in and built and that was TPW. We went to the open house two months ago, were able to watch the ribbon get cut and, uh, you know, the first thing I did was bought lights for my trailer that I needed to get and, and you know what? This has been a fun experiment, yet I would not trade this for anything because of the caliber of people, the caliber of businesses. And, uh, even though it's a little stressful at times, we've put a lot of money into the ground. And, uh, even though it may look like it isn't quite done, it's all paid for. We're, we're ready to go and there's building, there, it's going on out there. Anyway, I, I do need to read this, it's Trailer Parts Wholesale is locally owned business with eleven employees. It was started to supply custom-made trailer spring axles and torsion axles from two thousand to twelve thousand pounds. Capacity to trailer manufacturers and distributors throughout Utah, Idaho, Wyoming, Colorado, Nevada and Arizona trailers. Parts Wholesale has evolved into a retail business also, serving the public in trailer axles, or with trailer axles and trailer parts, including wheels and parts, lights, suspension parts, wheels, tires, hitches, jacks, they, they also sell light-duty pickup truck springs and suspension parts, lift kits and accessories. They have a service shop where they do repair work and installation and components, including welding on trailers, both steel and aluminum. Trailer Parts Wholesale has over thirty years of experience in suspension, they look forward to serving the community and growing. Matt and Scott, I'd love you to come up for a minute and, uh, take a minute or a few seconds, whatever you'd like to, on the microphone, but I have something that I, I want to give to you guys. You're gonna have to share it because we just know you guys are family and you love each other, but, uh, thank you for being a part of this, thank you for having the faith in us that we could work this together. And to the citizens of Santaquin, these are the first guys that stood up and, uh, we're making it happen, so, appreciate it. If you guys wanna come up? Jason, will you take a picture when we get done?
Dan, give me a whole five minutes to come up with that, so.
I thought it was pretty good, now admit that you wrote that whole thing, I'm, I'm impressed.
We're, we're glad to be here, part of the community, uh, I grew up here. Uh, Matt's family is originally from here also. So it's, it's nice to be in a, kinda like our hometown anyway, so. Uh, we appreciate what you've done to, you guys have been great to work with, to, to help us get in here and out of all the places we've built stores, this was probably the, the best place that we've, we've done yet as far as uh, dealing with the, the government and stuff like that, so you guys have been great to work with, appreciate that.
And you're set up to grow.
Yes, we are.
Now, Matt, are you gonna, you're gonna talk, aren't you?
Sure, yeah. I, I would emulate the same thing as Scott, you know, we, we, at first we're looking Spanish Fork. We've always been in Payson, that was kinda where we've, uh, had our other businesses and, um, and I'm really glad we moved to Santaquin. At first I was a little reluctant because of the, just, there's not many people here, you know? But man, when we finally got, bought the property and we get out there and you see how many people are rolling up and down that road and Summit Ridge Parkway.
Yep.
It's incredible. And, but you guys have been amazing to work with, getting the building up and getting us going and and like Scott says, it's been the best one that we've done so far, the best, the best experience and so we're looking forward to growing and yeah, I've been doing a great job here in Santaquin, so.
That's what we want.
So I have a gift for you both and, uh,
are you guys gonna come down with me or?
No, I'll, I'll.
They, they're going.
No, it's out here, he wants a picture, his idea, not mine.
All right, one, two, three. You know, we're related, we look a lot alike. Thank heavens for wondering. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that a whole bunch. Next, uh, appointments. Do you wanna take those or do you want me to just go with them or, no, we're gonna have John, John come in.
Excellent. So, um, I'm gonna start, before we get to appointments, we're gonna actually be.
Push the button on there for us, there you go.
Uh, before we appoint new, um, committee members, we actually have one outgoing, actually two that we're gonna recognize today. Um, one is not here, Sarah Olson has been with the, uh, recreation board and RAP Tax and Community Services Board and a volunteer with Trells, which she still does. Um, and she has reached kind of the end of her term as far as the RAP Tax Board. And so we're gonna be, uh, letting her go from that position, letting her focus on other areas, she's unable to be here today. And I'm gonna invite Shawna Shepherd to come up. Get a little treat. So, so Shawna has been with the library board, I was thinking, three years and she informed me, it's actually been six, so she's been here longer than I am. And, and she loves working, um, with all the children and helping all the patrons at the library. Um, from fundraisers, lots of, um, Valentine fundraisers and other areas that she's given input and helped, um, the library grow. It's been a significant growth in the last six years and hoping, looking forward to a future new home for a library as well, it's pretty exciting. And we know that Shawna's, uh, very busy, she's an administrator over at Mapleton High School? Virginia High? I, I, Maple Mountain High School. And so, as busy as she is, she takes time out to be a volunteer and so we appreciate that. Would you like to say anything? Just a?
One thought or one?
Just a nerd who loves books. Thank, thank you for the attention you give the library, we're excited for where it's going from here, we appreciate it, thank you.
Now, we understand you're not really going away because, uh, the state only allows someone to fill that board position for two terms and you did that. But you can come in for another term later on.
I sure can.
I hope you're planning on that, we may find a place to slip you in.
Love to help, thank you.
We appreciate you very much, should we get a picture of that too?
Yes, please.
Okay, now we have two appointments. Do you have anything we're reading for swearing in? Okay, so I'm gonna actually pass the baton, uh, we have two new appointments, one with RAP Tax Committee, Courtney Peterson, if you'll come up first. And then after that, we'll have Kathy Romero with the library board and they're actually gonna be sworn in today and we'll put them to work starting in January.
Please raise your right hand.
So do we, we probably need to get the, uh, council to a, approve your, your appointment first and then we can swear in? Mayor?
Well, that might be a good idea, but you know, sometimes we do things after.
Just a minor detail.
Do you really want to do this? Have you changed your mind since I talked to you on the phone?
Nope, we're good.
I still can't get over your son, so that was so funny, thank you.
It'd be embarrassing if we don't pass on it.
Would like, uh, a motion to approve Courtney Peterson on the, uh, RAP Tax.
So moved. Seconded?
And seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Now we can do the swearing in.
How was that? Is that, is that microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not close enough.
It might catch you.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will sub, obey, support and defend?
The Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Santaquin.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Santaquin.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the offices of my duty with.
Duties of my office.
Duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
You know, there'll be a test on this later. Yeah?
You, you wanna get a picture of that?
Sure, why don't we get a picture of them both together in a minute, okay? And then, I won't be walking so much, that's too many steps. It's the season.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
We gotta approve her first, right? Yeah, so.
Oh, we do.
The appointment of Kathy Romero on the library board.
Uh, you know, um, I'm kind of in the middle of, of reading a book that Kathy, uh, wrote. She's an amazing lady, she came from, and I'm sorry Courtney, I, I didn't, I'm, I'm not bypassing you, I'll say something later when I really figure out what to say, but. Kathy, Kathy I've known a little bit more and we, we've done a couple of bike trips. We've gone to Salt Lake and got twenty or thirty bikes at a time and been able to go, except this year I wasn't able to go. And she and her husband Mike Romero, they, they have taken a big part of making sure we get just bikes, bicycles to all these little guys in town for free. And it has been just an experience. In the meantime, Kathy, uh, shared with me that she was, had written a book and, uh, I had a chance to get a copy of it. It's about the love letters of her mother and father, her father was in, uh, the Pacific on Heartbreak Ridge and they wrote through the whole war. And it is the most incredible book, my wife, I can't get it out of her hands because I'm trying to read it and if I don't read far enough, she's got it hidden somewhere, but this is the kind of, of lady, and I'm sure Courtney falls in this too, but Kathy is inspiring. And I am so grateful, I know, uh, we've asked her to be a part of this library board and she, she has the kind of fortitude that I'm sure Courtney has with, with all that she's gonna put into effort, but the same as the rest, those ladies that serve on this library board are just amazing. Amazing. And, uh, I just wanna say that much, but I would also like to, uh, just get the support behind and say, um, I would like a motion to approve Kathy on the library board.
So moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
It's unanimous. So, we're gonna swear at you for a moment, or swear you in for a moment. And then we'll move on.
So, before we do that, if I'm allowed, I would like to present one of my books as a gift to the library so that you've got, you've got a copy of it in the library, so that's given to you with love from me.
So if I check that out, I can take the other one, let my wife use the other one? Okay.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, defend and obey.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Santaquin.
Of the city of Santaquin.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Mayor, hold on to that. Hold, hold on to it. Just hold on to it. You can be the first person to check it out. How to catalog it first?
I might go buy it now. I know where you can get it.
Okay, uh, that concludes that part, I do need to move on to the public forum. And in the public forum, there were three people that signed up and I'm not sure if Taylor and Courtney had an idea that they wanted to be on the forum and speak, you've got five minutes if you would like to. You signed up for it? Uh, John? You signed up for it as well?
He's just present. He's your Christmas present.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the good thought and, you know. Uh, I'd like to move on to building permits and business licenses. Jason, do you have that?
Yeah.
Hey, hey Mayor. It, it sounds like you might have somebody that might be, that didn't get to sign in.
Just come up, Chris. I didn't know.
Yeah, you're no problem.
And, uh, maybe someone else did too, so, did you wanna speak?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, let Chris go first and I'll give you a couple of minutes, okay?
I came tonight representing the board of Payson Fruit Growers.
Okay.
To say thank you for all you do for us. It's our sixty-year anniversary, so we brought you some cherry snacks to sample as a city. We're, uh, cooperative in Payson, most of growers are here in Santaquin.
Uh huh.
We, uh, are family, family farms. My farm has personally been going since sixty-eight when we planted our first apples and peaches, cherries. And, uh, Payson Fruit Growers is one of the largest co-ops that rate, that process cherries, tart cherries in the United States, we do about thirty to forty million a year, pounds. Every pound of cherries is about two hundred cherries, so it's a lot of cherries.
Yeah.
And we're just, uh, very happy to be here, we're happy to work with you guys on anything we can to keep agriculture in the community. We appreciate you guys, are very agriculture-minded, so we love that and we just wanted to come say thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Appreciate you guys.
Much appreciated.
I'd hate to miss somebody. State your name, though.
Hello, I'm David. Uh, I'm kinda new here in town.
Last name, too? In case we have to come after you. You know, these are all going into the police files. No, I'm just kidding. Last, first, David, what's your last name?
Jaster.
Oh.
Yeah. Anyway, um, I asked earlier today, and, and the lady, I thought she said that this is just for any suggestions for the town or anything?
Sure.
Right?
Um, sure.
Now, I don't know whether any of you have heard of this before. I think I read, I read this out of a magazine some years ago, and, uh, and I don't think it ever got implemented anywhere in the world, but I, I think it's a great idea. It was this idea, you know, speaking of checking out a book or something, have you heard that you can check out a person, you know? And I think the main, the main purpose behind it was to, um, to alleviate, um, um, racism, you know? So you would go to, I think it was the library, you know, I forget the article, but basically, you, you check out a person for a half hour, I think. And you know, like, if you have a hard time with somebody from a different, uh, faith, or, or culture, or anything, you would check out that person for a half hour. And then you would sit with that person just somewhere in the library. Uh, I forget if, if it was a separate room, or, or just in the corner, but anyway, you would check out that person for a half hour. And then, and then, you know, just by talking with them, you know, you'd feel a lot better about that person, or that, that race, or religion, or, you know, anything else, like race, religion. You know, just anybody that you have a hard time with in life, you could check out that person. And, um, I think it started in Holland or Denmark. I, I think it was Holland, but I, I only read that article just the one time, and I've never heard of that anywhere in the world. You know, I'm not sure if it really gained any traction, even over there where it, where, where it started. But, uh, but if, if none of us have heard of that, then it apparently didn't gain much traction. But, uh, you know, I don't know if this town would be willing or able to do it. You know, maybe this town doesn't have much of a problem with, uh, racism or anything, but of course, you know, in today's world, you know, we certainly do have a problem with that. So, um, you know, I think it might be worth, worth a go, or even if not here, I don't know how much influence you have amongst other neighboring towns, or, you know. But, but I think, uh, I think it would be a great idea, you know, you know, to at least give a try, you know? So, I hope you understood well enough. Do you think so?
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I barely remember the article, but that was the essence of it. You just check out somebody, and then you talk with them for a half hour, you know? So, well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do you wanna go ahead?
Yep. So this is the last council meeting for the year. I'll, I'll give you, uh, final numbers at our first meeting in, uh, the next calendar year, twenty twenty-five. But to, uh, to give you an update of where we're at, uh, this calendar year, uh, we're up to two hundred and sixty-three total residential dwelling units. And you can see the makeup of, uh, single-family and multifamily there. Uh, since, since we last, uh, reported on this about a month ago, that's about thirty-three up from, from where we were, uh, last council meeting. So, we have a few that are coming in before the end of the year. Fiscal year-wise, which, which means we're right in the middle of the fiscal year, we're up to a hundred and fifteen, and you can see that's compared to eighty-eight at this time last fiscal year. So, uh, doing still doing pretty good with, with the, the amount of permits, uh, new building permits that are, are, I should say, specifically new residential dwelling units. Uh, that's building permits. For business licenses, you can see we've got a handful, uh, there. Um, all of them are home occupations except for one, which is a new, uh, furniture and decoration store. That's the vacancy that is up by Marco's Pizza. Um, so yeah, I, I won't go through all of them, but you can see the list of them there. And, uh, for business licenses and building permits, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, we need to move on to the resolutions. The Resolution twelve oh one, twenty twenty-four, approval of amendment to the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force for the inter-local cooperat-, uh, cooperation agreement.
So Mayor and Council, as we discussed in the work session, this resolution is just amending an agreement that was put in place in twenty twenty. This amendment essentially is, is for noticing purposes of, of, uh, someone that may, may get brought into some type of a, of a claim or an action against them uh, if they're acting as part of the task force. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that, but it's fairly straightforward, I think.
Any questions on it? Then I would call for a motion to approve.
So moved?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And seconded, Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Let's move on to Resolution twelve oh two. This is the one, uh, about homeless aid. And, uh, you know, we're hearing a lot of this lately, especially, we've been, uh, asked to serve on this and go up north and actually work in the area where they bring them in for the night. So Colleen and I will go spend a night up there in this place, and that's coming right up, I'm sure. I'm waiting for a warm night, but. Anyway, would you like to go over that too, Norm?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, as we discussed, this is a resolution authorizing the, the city to donate a, a fairly minimal amount to help the county. The county has set aside two hundred thousand dollars to help the unsheltered with warming centers and other, uh, uh, resources to be able to help the homeless through the wintertime this, this year. This is an annual ask, and what they're asking from communities is, is, has a hundred dollars per thousand population, so that'd be nineteen hundred for us, as we're around, about nineteen thousand plus. And so this would set it at nineteen hundred. It would not go up annually unless there was some reason to amend the agreement. This is, this, this agreement would take, I believe it has a fifty-year, uh, threshold or a term, but it can be canceled at any, any time, I believe with a thirty-day notice. Again, this is something that is fairly minimal, and as much support as we've gotten from the county over the last couple of years, the mayor and, and those that I spoke with felt like that this was a, a reasonable ask from the county for us to help with this, with this, uh, situation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other questions? You've read that. Good. I'd entertain a motion to approve that. So moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Good. Let's move on to the, uh, approval of the amendment for the master development agreement for the Santaquin Research and Tech Center. We've, we've gone through this. Attorney's gone through it and looked at everything. We've made those adjustments. Do you wanna go over just a couple of those?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, this is a, an amendment to a development agreement that was put in place in January of this calendar year. And, uh, with, uh, with the Santaquin Research and, and Development, uh, Master Plan that they have, or sorry, Master Development Agreement that they have down there on that thirty-four, thirty-six acres down the south end of the, of the city. Um, this, this amendment, we gave it to you in a redline format so that you could see what was being changed. Things like, uh, potential island power, potential data center, potential other uses that would be added to the development agreement that was signed about a year ago. And that, uh, uh, authorizes those uses. I would again point out from our, our meeting earlier, we did make one correction, two corrections, one correction and one addition to what's in the packet. The first, uh, correction is that Exhibit E, as in Edward, in the document that was put in the, in the packet was incorrect. It didn't show both of these views. We put these, both of these views back in and would have the mayor sign that according to what was already approved in the original development agreement. For some reason, the formatting, when we had the, the track changes turned on, kinda blew things up on this particular page. The last thing also that I would mention is that we have, uh, one other redline that we would recommend, and that is that in Exhibit F, as in Frank, that we put in there the word, the two words "or permitted" in the parentheses at the top. As before, the three items that were in this table were not prohibited, or, or were prohibited, and now we're allowing for permitted uses, which are the two uses for the data center and the power generation on-site. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that on any of the redlines or these two, uh, proposed changes that we have.
John, you're here tonight. Is there anything that you would like to say, or anything you need to clear up, or do any of you want to ask John on anything? Okay.
My name is, my name is John Jensen. I'm the applicant, and thank you for putting this item on your agenda tonight. It's good to be in Santaquin. I appreciate the help from your staff. Uh, it's been, you know, a technical, you know, review, and I think that was appropriate. And I think everything that we've done since our last time I was here has been productive. Uh, good news. Things are just getting better. So I'm excited. I'm looking forward to the, the future development that's coming. I think, uh, your community's gonna love it. Uh, I think our designs that we hope to submit near term will prove to both the efficiency, so we're not, you know, using a disproportionate amount of resources, as well as providing, you know, jobs and hopefully exactly the revenue that we've been talking about. So, anyway, it's been good. Thank you. Any questions?
When, when you start that, you're supposed to say, "Guys."
I get, I get harassed if I do that. I've tried to improve my decorum.
No, we appreciate it. It's been good to work through this. I know we've, we've worked through all of these issues. I think we're in pretty good state with the development agreement moving forward. And, uh, we expect, yeah, a few more things to do, but we're knocking them down one by one, so.
Yeah, this, this potentially has the, as we've talked about, has the opportunity to bring in a significant amount of additional revenue to the city, jobs, lower, uh, drain on, on city resources, those types of things. So this is exciting for us. It, I would mention that it doesn't tie John and his group into anything other than just the opportunity to help us move this forward. And, and, and as we work through this process for the development agreement amendment, and as we go through, I think, John, we, we've shown that, that we're willing to, to work through things and, and figure out good solutions for whatever it is, we, whatever challenges come along.
I agree.
Great. Any questions? Anything? Then I would ask for a, uh, motion for approval on the amendment, uh, for twelve oh three, twenty twenty-four.
So moved?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'll second.
Okay. Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Motion passed. Now we move on to the next part. So, thank you. Appreciate it, John, very much. Need to move on to Resolution twelve oh four for the approval of the Public Assistant Articles Agreement for Drat, Drat, Disaster Relief Funding. Just so you know, in short, uh, this is what we need to write so that the government can give us the money that we filed for, for the FEMA losses, or the emergency losses that happened in the floods two years ago. And we couldn't just say, "Send us the money." Uh, Chris Lindquist worked very hard on getting this done, and I would like to acknowledge him and thank him for all the work that he has done to help us get through this. The federal government is a paperwork nightmare, and, uh, he has made this much lighter in, in getting the job done. So it doesn't assure that anything's a done deal, but, uh, he has put a lot of work into it. Again, thank you, Chris. Norm, did, uh, you wanna mention anything further?
No, this is just the mechanism that does allow us to bring in, like I say, I think it's a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of, of mitigation funds for the damages that have been caused and that we still need to, to recoup and, and, and fix some, some other infrastructure for the city. Again, this is specific to city infrastructure and costs, some costs that have already been incurred, but also work that would be to improve waterways or clean out storm drains, et cetera, for us to be able to have a more functional system.
Fix some of the things that get blown apart.
Yeah, if you have any questions, Chris is here to help and, and answer any questions if you have any thoughts or concerns on that for us.
Seeing none, I'd ask for, uh, approval on Revolution, uh, Resolution twelve oh four.
So moved?
Second? Moved and seconded, Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Good. We'll move on. I need to convene to the Santaquin Community Development and Renewal Agency. That's the CDRA. That is the method by which we're able to, in this case, put together an industrial park to be able to sell the lots and to deal with it as though we were a business. And it's covered under state statues, statutes, and we have convened this now for three years. And, uh, so I would, uh, ask for a motion to convene to the CDRA.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
So, for those of you that this is your first chance, we're no longer a mayor and a council. We are a, uh, board with the chairman of the board. And so we have to address ourselves as such because it's now a legal matter. We are convened into the CDRA for Santaquin. This is the one by which we are working on the projects that are out in the industrial parks, Santaquin Peaks, where, uh, TPW is located. This has to do, the first one, Resolution twelve oh one, it's within this CDA in its approval of the Hive Homes, uh, real estate purchase agreement. And, uh, what we've done in, in these is, uh, we have adjusted the boundary that is out, that we own between the curb and the property line. And it has given the, uh, businesses a little more room to park some cars. We don't have to plant grass out there because we don't plan on planting grass out there. It's, uh, a nicer thing. So, in this case, that's mostly what this one is, I believe, so.
Yeah, two things, the eleven, eleven-foot use of the park strip out front, and also the, uh, the, uh, prohibition of having shipping containers on-site other than through construction. And also for any type of building construction on the site, they can't use those containers. And this, this will expand this to about eight total acres of the, of the development that we've already put together, um, and, and apply to those properties that, that Hive Homes has purchased, as well as the ones that, uh, they still have an option on.
Okay, any questions? We've gone over this a few times. It was in the work session earlier. Um, I would ask then for a resolution, uh, for a motion on Resolution twelve oh one.
So moved?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
And I didn't have to say commissioner or, yeah.
Board member.
Board member.
Board member. We'll just move on. Uh, the second one is a resolution of, uh, in the CDA of the, uh, reassignment of the, uh, property purchase agreement. And, and it's really just the name of the purchaser. When the company came in and wanted to buy the property, we set the development agreement up under their business name. In the meantime, uh, they're going through some tax issues that they're trying to balance out, and in doing so, they had requested that we change the name, uh, so that it's going to the seller. They can then go through the tax things that they need, or the buyer, so that, uh, they can go through the tax things within their, their company and with their CPA. And we've done this previous on one other property. It's just a formality more than anything. Um, anything else?
Nope, that's it, Mayor.
I, I think it's just at the wish of the purchaser, and they're ready to build, so.
Ready to close, yep.
Yeah, well.
And build.
They're ready to close and build. They wanna get underway. So, uh, anyway, uh, do you have any questions on twelve oh two? Understand what it is. We went over it, as we said in the earlier meeting. That's all on, online. So, anything else?
Nope, just need, need a motion.
Then I would, uh, ask for a motion on twelve oh two.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Motion passed. I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to get out of the CDA. Motion passed. I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to get out of the CDRA and go back to, uh, council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
You know, I'm gonna mess these names up before you know it. Okay, so magically we are a council again. The mayor and council are back in business. But we have taken care of some business that we need to do. Uh, we will now do a transaction of selling, uh, complete, completing the sale of one of those properties out there. Anybody that wants to go see them, there's another business going in. There's two or three others that are getting to, getting ready to go up. And we expect by midsummer, we're gonna see some pretty massive things coming about, out there. So, uh, it's gonna be fun to see, see this all take place. Um, let's move into the reports of the officers, staff and board meetings. So, uh, Jason, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I don't have much to report tonight. Uh, obviously we didn't have a planning commission, uh, with the, the Christmas party that we had. And we'll have another planning commission the second Tuesday of, of January, which is still a few weeks away. So I'll update you at the next council meeting of, of any pending applications and things that are coming forward.
Okay. Norm?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a couple of things really quick. Um, for the, for the public and for the council and mayor, the Main Street project is moving along. You've seen that they, if you've been down there, you've seen that the most, that from 100 West to about 300 East is mostly complete. We're waiting on the traffic signal. The, the, uh, there was a little bit of a hiccup between us and, and the, the electrical and the, and the power company, but we've got that taken care of now. And they look at that lighting up that signal on the 24th. So on next Wednesday or next Tuesday, it will be a Christmas miracle. We'll have, we'll have a center, center street traffic signal operational. Um, also, streetlights, as we've talked about before, have been delayed a number of times from the manufacturer. They're supposed to be here, I think, late this week and, and moving into next week, getting those installed as well. Again, just from 100 West to 300 East. And they're working on the dry utilities on the west end down to about 500 West right now. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that. I would also bring to your attention that the Central Utah Water Project, the, the, uh, South ULS Pipeline is still underway. There, there is an anticipated closure of 400 East at the canal, coming up here pretty quick in the next couple of weeks. I, I want to say it's right around the first of the year, they're gonna close 400 East for about two weeks to get the pipe across there and then open it back up. So there will be a detour in place for that. And, uh, staff and, and, uh, fire and EMS and police have been made aware of that when that happens. Like I said, that's gonna start in about a week to a week and a half, and then it'll be about a two-week-long closure on 400 East. That's gonna be pretty major because that's a fairly, uh, um, major road going north.
They've got signs up down there now with the dates.
Okay.
Wish I could remember what they were, but, but they're on the sign when I came home today.
Okay, that's great. I knew they were gonna put message signs up and that's great, informing the public that that's happening. And so that should be, that, like I said, it's, it's coming up here pretty quick. And I wanted to make sure the council and the public that are listening are aware of that.
Yeah, most people that make that trip down that road do know they can go over to Center Street and get around it. But it's an inconvenience, we know. But I think one thing that does need to be said is there was skepticism that Main Street, when we would work on it, really could do what we were saying. Five lanes, two lanes each way and a turning lane as well as parking. And you know what? It works pretty dang good. And it looks good. So I'm excited. I, and I know the, the Central Utah project that we're working on that, uh, is bringing us water, um, by the acre feet, uh, is going to be a nice addition. And we have to put up with this. They're trying to get this part of it finished and out of their hair so that they can work and continue to work, uh, within their construction season times. And I, I'm just glad. They, they meet up here every, every week.
Yep.
And, uh, they are good people. And it's a good contract. We're doing things that even tie back into floodwaters. And, uh, we had a meeting on that the other day. It went really well. But anything else, Norm?
I don't have anything else, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has on other projects or other things that are going on in the city.
Okay. Travis?
I don't have any questions for Norm. Um, YCC had a, an activity last week where we got some names of some seniors that could use some visits on this holiday season from Sarah Miller. And she does a great job with the seniors. And we were able to go visit about 11 families. Uh, one of them turned out not to be a senior because I let one of the kids use the map. So some family with young kids got some treats this year. But, uh, they were, they were grateful. It was a pretty rewarding experience. And I think the kids got that too, just to see the person's eyes light up on their face when kids show up, sing them a Christmas song and had them a plate of treats. It was, it was really good, so.
Wait a minute. You saw a young man get treats tonight. He was pretty lit up.
Yes.
Sugared up now. Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I've got.
Lynn?
Nothing for me tonight. Jeff? Uh, just wanted to thank everyone who played a part in holidays. That was a really good event. The craft fair here was really great. Uh, the drone show was fantastic. Um, and that's all I have.
Free, free bikes for kids?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Did the free bikes for kids, uh, that morning. So we had a busy Saturday that day. That was fun. We had about, we had 17 kids show up and get, get up there and get bikes and.
How, how many bikes have, you know, I said that when we were talking about it earlier. How many bikes, Mike, Jeff, do you think we've given away in the last three years?
About 20 per year.
20 per year?
Is about what we get.
So.
It's our third year.
Sixty, sixty bikes.
60.
We've, we've gotta be one of the biggest groups that go into that.
Yeah, they, they set us apart. They make sure we have our own little time to be, be there and do everything.
Oh, I, I, you know what? If, if you could just explain what it's like to see a kid that has never owned a bike, has never owned his own helmet.
Yeah.
Never had a reason to have a water bottle, have it all just given to him. And then when you bring it home and there's a meal that's brought here by, uh, um, Maracas. And, and it's just fun. And then a lot of the kids say, I don't know how to get it home. It's in a truck and I don't know really how to ride it much. Never owned a bike. And, and you just say, okay, we'll take it to your home. I, I, I'm assuming you probably did too. I missed it this year and regret that. But to see those little kids light up and say, it really is my bike. It just breaks your heart. And, uh, what a wonderful thing, you know, to be involved with that as a council. And, uh, the good people in town that have put their hearts into it, thank you. Thanks to everybody. And we'll do it again next year.
Yeah.
It's, it's just neat, so.
Yeah, they always want us to come back.
Yeah.
And this year they got gloves too.
Oh, did they?
Little cotton gloves.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, that was the first time I'd seen that. We actually, someone brought, a mother brought her, like, two-year-old with her son. They found a bike for him too.
Oh, is that?
One of those little scooters that don't have pedals. They had one of those for him.
Yeah.
That was.
You know.
He did not want to let that bike go. We had to put it up in the trailer to drive home. He was not happy.
[laughing]
But he got it right back an hour later. So he was fine.
You know what? There are so many good people. And, uh, we're able to make some donations through the year. And, uh, privately, we've done a few. And, uh, I just want you to know, those are the kind of things that break down the barriers, that mean as much as almost an interview sometimes because you're just hugging every kid that's around and you're meeting people that you just don't know because they don't, they work and they work very hard, but they're not always able to rub shoulders with everybody else. And I love that. I love that we can be a part of it. So, um, I don't have too much to say today. We're still working with.
Mayor, about Art?
Oh, oh, shit.
My, my name's Bob.
Art?
I'm new here.
Sorry.
Unfortunately, I missed holidays too. I was suffering in Phoenix in the 73-degree weather. I do regret missing it. I'm glad somebody posted photos of the drone show so that I could see those photos. What an awesome spectacular that was. It was just really great.
Oh, it was good last year too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I may have a conflict next year too. We'll see when she's gonna be baptized. I enjoyed the city calendar. Somebody went to an awful lot of work of making some very good pictures in that catalog, in the calendar. And, uh, it was really nicely done, so.
Just, just so you know, there is a lot of work that goes into that. There's a lot of work. It isn't just throw some pictures in and file and call it good. There's a lot of work that goes into it. And we, we do know that it's appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah, one of our sons.
You know when you're trash.
One of our sons and his wives used to make a family calendar. And, you know, it was a six-month project just to collect everything to make it happen. So.
Yeah.
But they, they were gorgeous pictures. It represents Santaquin well. And, and, uh, appreciate receiving that. And to the staff and council and all of our employees and citizens, uh, we hope, I hope you have a very nice holiday and Merry Christmas. And life's short, believe it or not. Uh, even you with the young folks that are patriotic and say the pledge, and enjoy the moment. They call today the present because it's a gift.
Thanks, Art. Um, have met with some pretty cool business people the last few weeks and, uh, we have some interest in a lot of things in our town. Things that I wish I could give you the details on, but people that want to build some fantastic things that will only add to our city. You know, we do have more houses going in. We do have a lot of things that are happening. And we're trying to address them all. Um, you know, unfortunately, we are judged sometimes on the internet. And, uh, you know, it's, it's strange, but it's almost like people write things on Facebook that we are unresponsive or, uh, don't treat people the same way. And you know what? We do. And we love people. And we try to do our best in everything. Every person that works in this city does an incredible job. And, uh, I was in the, at the city party the other night and looking at a couple of hundred people whose lives are, are all a part of this city, from fire and police to the people that do the bills and, and, uh, work in the courts and everything else that make this city what it is. And even though you're judged at times, we don't get on Facebook and make comments back because it's just not the place for us to put them. We give our comments in these meetings and we have things on our websites. And, and we stick with that because that's where it has to be. We're not people that want to respond or to tear down or to make people think we're not doing things. Everything that is changed throughout the city is engineered. And we are very thorough. These people in our engineering and building departments, our public works and everything else are so talented. They are great. And they are giving us their gifts, their gifts of their talents and making the best. I appreciate them. I appreciate the many businesses that are working with our city and the good things that are happening. And the good people that are coming to town. Thank you. Um, as we close this meeting, uh, we need to go into a closed session tonight, um, that may be called to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, collective bargaining and/or purchase exchange or lease of real property, a proposed development agreement, a project proposal or a financing proposal related to a development of land owned by the state. That all come off the top of my head. I never read a word I read at all. Um, it's important for us to have this meeting tonight. So I would ask that, uh, we adjourn this meeting to go to the closed session where after that closed session, we'll come back in and close this meeting with no further actions or votes taken. So I would entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn to a closed session.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
And we will have a, a short adjournment and be in our chambers in a few minutes. Thank you for coming. Hey, Brother Peterson, what's that little guy's name?
Oliver.
Oliver?
Yes.
Come here.
You want some more?
Yeah, do you want some more?